If you're here for the public hearing, you do not have to fill out an open forum. You can speak during a hearing, so don't worry about getting any other agenda items. It has to be a thing, but a public hearing, we're good. You can say anything you want to. We'll start in just a minute. I got Melanie's. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled March 19th City Council of Nacogdoches meeting. I'd ask Mr. Bolden ladies in prayer, please.
Let us bow for a moment. Our heaven father, we gather here today under your care and protection. Thank you for your love and kindness that never fails us. We thank you for those with us, that you would guide our thoughts and actions to bring you glory. Strengthen us and fill us with your peace. Make us aware that it is not just what we do, it is important how we do it. Father, let us remember that March is Women History Month. Thank you for all the cherished women in our lives and in our histories, mothers, sisters, friends, neighbors. We pray for all women who face prejudice and equality, gender disparities. Help us to see and to face discrimination against women in all many forms it may take. Father, we ask that what we do here is pleasing in your name. Amen.
Amen. We will stand for the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, next item is open forum. We have one open forum. Ms. Wanda?
Bring it on down here. Good evening, Mayor Johnson, City Council, and City Manager Bedlam. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of Walkable Nacogdoches. And my name is Wanda Kniff, and I live at 623 King Street with my husband Troy and our small dog Rosie. Troy and I are retired from Nacogdoches ISD and frequently walk around our neighborhood from Pecan Park to downtown. And I'm sure council members Kathleen and Brad have seen Rosie and me walking every morning from Wood to Texas Streets, down Logan's Port Street, King, Mound, and Houston Streets. First, I'd like to let you know that our initial group walk for Walkable Nacogdoches is planned for going down Pearl Street this Friday at 5:30 in the evening. We're in the process of circulating surveys about walking and biking safety in Nacogdoches. Pearl Street is an area of major concern due to high bike and pedestrian traffic on a street with a lot of speeding and no sidewalks. So that will be our first walk on Friday at 5:30. We changed the date from Thursday due to predicted thunderstorms. And we'd love to have any of you come and walk with us as we greet residents and gain feedback from them on how Pearl Street can be improved for their walking and bike safety. We plan to take our second walk on MLK Boulevard on April the 11th, and you can expect an invitation for that. We also encourage you to view our Facebook page, Walkable Nacogdoches, and respond to our survey. So far, we've received about 200 responses to the survey. In my own neighborhood, there is an unsafe intersection at Logan's Port Street and Martinsville Road. There are two stop signs there, but due to high-speed traffic and a dangerously wide radius turn from Martinsville onto Logan's Port, there really needs to be a third stop sign at Logan's Port before turning east onto Martinsville Road or backwards, either way. This was the site of a pedestrian traffic death due to high speeds fairly recently. We feel that this is an example of a pretty simple and cost-effective way to make that intersection safe by slowing traffic. That intersection is a very busy cross street for families and children and dog walkers and bikes and disabled folks in wheelchairs coming from Independence Manor to go to stores on North Street. So I thank you so much for hearing my concerns. Please feel free to reach out to our group about any information that we are collecting from citizens about improving biking and walking safety in our beautiful and historic town. Thank you.
Kathleen, come on.
Want me to say something? Okay. This is Red Cross Month, and so the mayor asked me to say a little bit about the Red Cross. You may not know this, but the Red Cross is very, very active in Nacogdoches. There are volunteers who go out when there are fires to assess the damage and to try to help people. There's a lot of assistance during disasters. Melanie, by the way, is the volunteer coordinator. So all of you who now want to be a member of Red Cross and help all these people can visit with Melanie right away and put your name on it. There's training. The biggest reason that I volunteer is during major disasters when we have sheltering. And we put many people up, some our own residents here in Nacogdoches, but also people from all over. You know, we sheltered people in Katrina, Harvey, I can't even think.
The floods, the tornadoes.
Yeah, so and during sheltering, we need a whole lot of help because people need to be fed, they need assistance sometimes, even in simple chores, and we need to staff these shelters. So if you are interested in being in Red Cross, I admire Melanie for everything she does. Do you want to say anything else, Melanie?
Well, I just want to say thank you for the chance to celebrate Red Cross Month. It's a time when I personally feel like it's great to be able to honor our volunteers because Red Cross operates with almost 95% volunteer basis. There are some employees, staff members, that are in, say, Orange, Texas, but as far as Nacogdoches, when you see Red Cross shirts or vests around here, that person's giving up their own time to come and help somebody else who's having a hard day. So I really appreciate the chance to celebrate our volunteers. We're approaching storm season, hurricane flood season, so our volunteers are hard at work right now, training and getting ready to help our neighbors if we're needed.
Let me just add, our city is a partner, city administration and the county.
Thank y'all very much. And I have a proclamation for the Red Cross. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Nacogdoches, Texas, and reaffirm our commitment to support one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the Nacogdoches community to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make it a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, or providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. Whereas we recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Randy Johnson, Mayor of the City of Nacogdoches, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize March 20, March 2024 as Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Nacogdoches to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the items to be removed from the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove item I, please.
Item I.
And I will make a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Discussion on I, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman. City Council, City Office, Director of Public Works.
Could you just give us a quick background on this project and the necessity to do it and the cost therein?
Okay, yeah, so we've got wells five and 10, which are both aged. They are no longer economical for us to utilize them. In fact, they're not in service today. TCQ requires when that is the case that you abandon and plug these wells, so it just protects the aquifer that these wells are drawn out of. And so there's a cost associated with that, obviously, as you can imagine. We, in the CIP, had $180,000 for this effort, and we got a quote from a well driller for $211,787 for that work. And so we were just requesting a budget amendment to cover the balance of that amount in the amount of $40,000. And so if that were to be approved, we would allocate those funds and be able to move forward with that project, so.
So just for my own mind, what do our wells look like? How big are they? How deep are they, just in general?
Well, they're several hundred feet deep. They have a metal pipe that goes down with screens that allows water to filter in. It's gravel-packed around it to, again, help with the filtering. It's got a concrete wellhead at the top with a vertical turbine pump which sucks the water out to the piping. The thing goes under the ground and into our supply system.
What portions of our city are served by well water?
It's generally the south side, south of Main Street, generally. The north side basically is served from our lake.
Those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Just, is it permanent when you close a well down?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and they will also submit a report to the state, the well driller will, and it's basically decommissioned from then, so.
When did they decide that this was not? I mean, did this happen this year or last year?
No, we budgeted for it this year. It's, they've both been out of service for a couple of years. We've tried to figure out how to utilize them. The well 10 is out at the wastewater treatment plant, the entrance to the plant there. We've tried to look at ways to engineer, ways to basically utilize that non-podable water with our facilities' needs out there at the plant, and none of it really came back economical to do. You know, the cost to do that even was really not worth the investment, so we've kind of backed off of trying to utilize these things any longer.
True, thank you.
No other questions? I will make a motion. We approve item I.
I'll second. We have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move to the regular agenda. This will be a public hearing to consider approval of a specific use permit to operate a halfway house in R4 multifamily district on Lot 8, Block 3 of the Bonita subdivision located at 2019 Pearl Street. The request of this has been submitted by New Hope Communities of Texas Incorporated, case number S U P 2004-01. Interim city planner.
Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson, City Council, Juan Palet, interim city planner. So this request is for a specific use permit to operate a halfway house in an existing 3,150 square foot home located at 2019 Pearl Street on the southwest corner of West College and Pearl. This house was constructed in 2012 for the Burke Center and operated as a family group home for people with intellectual or developmental disabilities until the middle of last year. This house has two levels with nine bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms, and parking in the back for 10 vehicles. The applicant is proposing to use this house as an alcohol and drug abuse recovery home. This property is Zoned R4 multifamily and requires the approval of a specific use permit for a house, halfway house to operate in the zoning district. The property is surrounded on all sides by multifamily development. Just south of the multifamily development is, along Pearl Street, is single-family development and a major commercial corridor one block east of the subject property. This is a view of the subject property from the front, and the following slides are pictures of the multifamily development adjacent to the subject property. So this slide shows the types of uses within the 200-foot notification area. Staff sent out 15 notices to the property owners and received three written responses in opposition and one in favor. Staff checked to see if the opposing response forms triggered the 20% rule, requiring a favorable vote of three fourths of City Council for the request to pass. The three properties totaled 15.4%. This slide shows the location of property owners opposed in opposition and support of the request. The red stars represent residents opposed and the green in favor. This slide shows the breakdown of the notifications staff sent out and the responses received. During the public hearings, we heard emotional testimonies of residents stating the need and the importance for alcohol and drug abuse recovery home in Nacogdoches and the fact that this house was originally built and for this use and is moving ready. We also heard that from the concerned residents in opposition stating the main concern was the safety of the neighborhood, decreased property values, and not being in an appropriate location. In response to these concerns, the applicant stated that with the strict rules and requirements that each resident has to abide by and the zero tolerance policy, if any of these requirements are broken, this house will be one of the safer houses in the area. Staff believes that from a land use perspective, this request meets the conditions for approval. The one condition in question is compatibility. This home is not immediately adjacent to single-family, and the central location close and the close proximity to the city's commercial corridor provides convenient access to employment, public transportation, retail, and other essential services. So on March 11th, the commission voted unanimously to approve, four to zero, to approve the S U P with the following conditions. These conditions were proposed by the applicant to help ease any concerns, and they are as follows. No one is allowed to reside in, reside at the property if they have had a conviction in the past 10 years of criminal homicide, kidnapping, unlawful restraint, or smuggling offenses. No one is allowed to reside at the property if they have ever been convicted of any sexual offenses. Submit a quarterly report to the city confirming compliance with a list of individuals residing at the home, names redacted, showing full report on criminal history, admittance and projected discharge date, any other pertinent information the city may request, security cameras installed along the premises on the outside, drug and alcohol testing, cell phone monitoring, and zero tolerance for curfew violations. In conclusion, I just want to say that the S U Ps do run in perpetuity with the property. And I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council.
We go to the audience next. Okay, yes, is the applicant here?
Mayor Johnson, City Council members, good evening. I am the CEO and the Chair of New Hope Communities of Texas. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Our mission is to provide a safe, secure, faith-based, drug interdiction, and housing services. We thank you for the opportunity to address this with you all, and we're grateful to the zoning board for approving this at the last meeting. I personally have been a registered nurse for 43 years. I have seen in that time the ravages of addiction, both personally and in my profession. I've seen the impact on the lives and on the families and on the community, including Nacogdoches. I've also seen destructive power of addiction in my family that opened my eyes to a different perspective of addiction. I know personally how important it is to have a caring, support, and some loving accountability to help people get past these addictions. We want to get between these people and their interdictions and reunite them with their families when possible. We've been blessed and we feel fortunate to have the support that we have received so far, and we look forward to being not only an effective ministry, but also a good neighbor to the residents on Pearl Street. We respectfully ask for your support, and if approved, promise to make you very proud of this project and this ministry. Thank you.
Now you can open the public hearing. Okay, now we'll open it for a public, uh, public hearing. So please, yeah, you might as well go ahead.
So I don't want to take too long. I appear, my name is Bob Inslem, and I'm Judge of the 217th District Court. Y'all have a neighbor to the south, we call it Angelina County. I am, I'm also a drug court judge. I've been one for, I don't know how many years. I've been on the bench for 17 of those years. And I also am president of the Kirkland House as well as the Man-tooth House. One's a women's house and one is a men's house. The women's house has actually been in existence for over five years. And people ask me, why did I get involved in this in the first place? And honestly, it had to do with a couple of things. I got tired of sending people back in the same toxic situation. And I wasn't going to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. There was a girl, and her name was Amy Malone, and she has a swing where we put up for her. And she, she was a, so she was a drug addict, and she, she got it from her dad originally. He was a drug dealer. I ended up sending, sending him to Penn for the rest of his life. But anyway, Amy, he's, was an addict, ended up getting killed by a drug dealer. They called it hot shot, it was a mixture of methamphetamines and cocaine. And I thought if we could have sent her somewhere else, if she could have been somewhere in a safe environment, she still might still be alive here today. I don't know. That's up to God. That was, but I thought that I could do something different. And so we have had, we opened the Man-Tooth House, and it's a funny little story. It's about a, it's a newer house. It's in Lufkin, and it's, the T L L Temple Foundation bought the whole block. Originally, the Drug and Alcohol Counseling Center, which y'all have here, ADAC, I call, we call it, is located on that block. And someone showed me the house, and I said, they said, well, we're thinking about doing this or that. I said, no, I got it. I know what we're going to do. We're going to turn this into a women's sober house. And so we did. And we have, up till last year, we had it at, the women lived at the Man-Tooth House, and then down the road, we opened a, we found another house, and we got another grant, and we opened a men's house. Anyway, but bottom line is, we had to switch because there was eight women sharing two bathrooms, and then they found out that the other house had four bathrooms available for eight women. And so being Women's Month, I understood, you better, every month is Women's Month in my world. But anyway, we, we opened it up, and it's been an absolute success. But there's rules to it, and these are the rules that I'm, you know, Faye to me has got that passion, and luckily for me, I have a little bit of experience in it. And yes, I understand the fear of it. I understand the fear of it. But you know what? Right now, on the streets of this city and this county, there are addicts. There are addicts, females, males, black, white, green, blue, and purple, and all kinds, rich and poor, they're here. And what we, I wish we could have more space, honestly, because y'all have the same problem we do in Angelina County. Y'all, y'all are full. Y'all are, your jail is full. Penitentiary system doesn't, doesn't really work this thing. I send somebody to the penitentiary for 10 years, and they get, maybe they'll be gone for maybe two years, and they come back, and they're on parole, and parole is easy compared to being on probation. But let's go back to what we expect you to do when you go into one of our sober houses. And what I, this is what I talked to Faye about, because quite honestly, I think women are easier to, they form a better bond, generally speaking. In order to get into our house, you must attend at least a 30-day rehab and go directly from that rehab facility right to that home. You must attend and complete an AA, NA, Most Excellent Way, Celebrate Recovery, at least twice a week. I don't know if y'all know all of those things, but y'all generally know what AA is and NA is, and the other ones are faith-based. You pay $400 rent per month. That's relatively cheap, but it also teaches you responsibility that you must have a financial stake in it. The reason it's, it's good, that's on that level, but it's also good on this level. And this is what I would recommend they do at New Hope is, we all are the Red Cross. You, y'all were talking about the compassion of Red Cross, how much support you get in Nacogdoches County. I know what the house costs, at least I thought it did, I think I do. We can raise that money in Nacogdoches. We can raise that in Nacogdoches within six months, I am certain. So the $400, and we don't, we don't have, y'all have the same problem we do. We have fundraisers in Angelina County every, it seems like every week, somebody's hitting you up for money for something. But that $400 would actually cover, or whatever the amount is on the rent they decide to have, that would cover all the expenses. So we don't have fundraisers, and you maintain the house, and it will look good, I promise We also expect our tenants to do a daily chore. They rotate, they maintain the house, they keep it clean. It's their, it's not their house, it's their home. Home and house makes a big difference, doesn't it? There's a curfew, and people go, oh my gosh, we, there's the apartment complex. They don't have curfews, we have curfews, and they're maintained. And I heard it earlier, we talked about zero tolerance, and zero tolerance is zero tolerance. I can't afford to have one person ruin the lives of those seven other people. Well, there's actually another person in there, and this is a little bit different than, I think I talked to planning and zoning about Oxford Houses. Those are, the Oxford House doesn't actually have a manager. We have a manager, and it's her ministry. And I think I told the story at planning and zoning, is that this lady went to the Mosaic Center, which is the Women's Job Corps. Y'all have one here. We have one in Lufkin. I was on the board for, I don't know, 12 years at least. And her, when she was graduating, she, her goal she wrote down was... And her, when, when she was graduating, she, her goal, she wrote down was to open a women's sober house. So when we went looking for a, a, a house manager, somebody applied, and we really thinking about it, and she said, she prayed about it, and, and she said, you know, the answer was no. It's like, oh, it's terrible. But Melissa came into our lives and told that story. And she's in recovery, and she's been with us the entire time. She doesn't get paid much, she doesn't want much, this is what her dream is. You think, okay, well, I, I hear this occasionally, what about, you know, it's, it's Nacogdoches. What, you know, we don't want people coming in from, you know, Angelina County to get their services. Our preference is to have people from Angelina County, but not all the women are from Angelina County. We actually end up with people who say, hey, I don't, I, I need to leave, you know, Brazos County, and stay away from Brazos County. And they come to us, and they, and they'll stay for, with us. We want, we want you to stay at least three months, but preferably, we want you to stay up to a year, because it's, it's, it takes that long for you to, to heal. So, I would say there's a preference that, for Nacogdoches County, if, if, for this house here, but I don't think it needs to be exclusive. I think they talked about it, this, this building is absolutely perfect. I talked about it at Planning and Zoning, and I hate to bore y'all, but when I walked in this building, it had everything in place. I spent two years of my life on my hands and knees remodeling these old houses. But this one was move-in ready. And I, I understand Burke Center patients are different than, than addicts, and I know, but, but the same issues still apply. So what I'm looking at is, if we implement these, these rules with those conditions that, that were already talked about, and, and I agree, there's, there's, I talked about it, sex offenders, you, you don't, you don't enter the premises, you don't get anywhere near us. And, and you don't go in, if you're a man, into that house. You know, it's a, it's a female house. I, I am the director, I've been president forever, but I don't go in unless I'm escorted with, with my manager. I mean, I'm relatively, I don't know, well-known or something, but I, I, in, in Angelina County, but anyway. So I think the safeguards are there, I understand the fear of it. This, I've been to the house, I've been to the neighborhood. It wasn't the neighborhood that it was forty years ago, but it's still a nice neighborhood. And we'll make it a nice neighborhood, we'll keep it a nice neighborhood. If, if you're looking at houses that will have their yards done, this house will have their yard done, and it will be painted, it will be clean, it will be nice. So anyway, I don't know, I don't want to go too long, I know I've talked way too much probably, but if y'all have any questions, please ask me. And, and if anybody afterwards wants to ask me a question in the audience, I will sit here until tomorrow at eight o'clock, when I gotta go to work. Make it seven-thirty. I gotta, I got a thirty-minute commute. So, did y'all have any questions, comments, thoughts?
Are you part of this orgi, I mean, are you running this house?
No, I'm not running the house, but I, but.
Are you funding the house? I mean, it seems like we're talking to the person that's.
Yeah, I'm, I'll tell you what.
I know you own it, but I just.
No, it's a nonprofit, and I'll tell you what, I, I'm committed. I, I'm like that, that, that piece of sausage on the, at breakfast, the eggs of participants, I'm, I'm, I get committed. And I'm, I'm, I'll tell you why. Because I'm not saying I'll be on the board, I wanted probably to be on the board, but they need to at least ask me, because I don't. I got a few people in my life said that I'm a little too controlling, but my, my commitment is for it to get on, I want it funded, I want it organized, I want it running, and I got at least a year-on commitment if they're willing to take me. But I don't want to be pushy.
Yeah, I just got one question.
Go ahead.
You keep mentioning sober house.
Yes, sir.
But sup is for a halfway house. And to me, I've lived in the neighborhood where there wasn't no HOA, and I've lived in, on the same street with a halfway house and a sober house, which to me was totally different.
It is. It, to me, this halfway house is that, halfway house to me, you notice that it's, it's halfway, more like a penitentiary system where you're out on parole, and then, this to me, and I call it a sober house, it's a sober house. We, we, we are having people who live that, that life of sobriety and life of recovery. It's, you, you can come in here, you can come to this house, you can come to the Mantooth House or the Kirkland House without having a criminal history. You, y'all, we all know people who go to, off to rehabs, and they didn't commit a crime, or they didn't get caught at a crime, and they can, they can apply to come here. They can come to us thirty days or sixty days. There's all over the state of Texas that have these rehabs. You don't have to commit a crime to be taken here.
Because there was participants at the sober house that was, either the insurance helped fund their stay there, or they was paying out of their pocket. Now, I'm totally against a halfway house, but I would think different about a sober house. It's a totally different thing.
It's, yes, it's night and day. Now, we're, now, they're ma, they're, that's what I said at the very beginning, is they're, they're gonna be on, they could be on probation, and I should have, versus on parole. Okay, I don't think that we need parolees right now, definitely, maybe somewhere in the future, but right now, we, we deal with people who are on probation, who are being supervised by Nacogdoches County. They're just down the street. I mean, I've met with Ty McCarty, I mean, he, this is, they would be people on probation in Nacogdoches County, or just what you pointed out, you go to a private rehab for thirty days, and you need a place to go.
Detox, in other words.
You can detox, but I, I want more than detox. Detox, I mean, I, you're probably on the same page, but detox can just be like a five-day program. But, but you need, our, our requirement, at least in Angelina County, and this is what I would recommend here, is thirty days, at least thirty days, I prefer to even ninety days. You go, and then you, you, you can come in. So it's either, you know, you've gone to a private rehab, or you've gone, because, you know, some judges, like they said, nudge from the judge, where you go to, to a rehab. So, does that answer your question?
No, I understand about the sober house. I mean, terrible about the halfway house, but that's what you was asking for the sup, is the halfway house.
I'm not asking for a halfway house. They may call it that, but it's, it's a sober house. It is a, this is a sober house. This is where you get, you have random UAs. You, it's not a halfway house for.
Okay. What, what's the staff like? I mean, how many staff people you have, and how many hours each one of them is at that halfway, I mean, at.
At my sober house in Lufkin? We have, we have two people. One gets five hundred dollars a month to manage eight women, one gets five hundred dollars a month to, they get, they get, you know, they, they live there. So they get free housing, and they get five hundred dollars a month. You gotta want to, to be, this has gotta be your ministry, this has gotta be your hope. So, yes, and then we pay the utilities, insurance, upkeep. That's all we do. But it's not, just to make sure, it's not a halfway house. It, it is a sober house, it's a house of recovery.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Judge, how do they get there?
How do they get there?
Yes, I mean, are they, do you?
Oh, good question.
Tell them to go, or, or does it, is it through probation, or, or, how, how, how are, they're gonna be people in this house? How are they gonna be?
Right.
How are they gonna get there?
Very good question. We actually, probation can refer them, judges can refer them, but we get a lot of people who just file an applica, you gotta go through an application process. We don't take everybody who just, hey, we, I'm coming. No, we're not gonna do that. We go through an application process, we vet them, we look at their application. I just literally got one just a few minutes ago, we'll have a vacancy at the women's house. And we, we look at it, and we, we, sometimes we interview them, sometimes we can just look at the application and realize that they're not a good fit. I mean, I got, I'm, I'm responsible for eight women, nine women. So, so what happens is, to answer your question, say you're, say you're at Brazos Port, it's a thirty-day rehab, and what they'll do is, their counselor will say, okay, where are you, what's your plan? And they go, oh, I don't have a plan. And they say, okay, we, we're gonna try to find you a, a, a sober house. And they'll, they'll make an application to us, that you can do it online, or you fax us in one, or mail us one, and then we look at it, and then we make a decision. But ultimately, our best thing is to, you, you don't have that much turnover, because you have eight people, and they're in different stages of, of living there. So when they get out of that, if they, say they get out of Brazos Port on March the seventeenth, we'll be down there on March seventeenth, and we will pick you up, or you'll have a ride, a lot of times a relative will drive you directly from that facility to us.
Okay. Will, will this be a nonprofit?
It's absolutely 501(c) right now.
And will it be registered in Angelina County, or will it be registered in Nacogdoches?
Nacogdoches. I'm just here to just.
I, I know, I'm just, I know you have two down there, I just wanted to make sure that.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I've bitten off way, yeah, I've been, yeah, I'm chewing on a lot.
Okay. I, I have had, and this is, I've had my experience with alcohol. I'm twenty-four years sober, July the fifteenth this coming year. And I, I was fortunate, I had a family.
Right.
That supported me. A lot of people don't. They don't have nothing, you know? And anyway, I, I totally understand what you're doing.
Yeah, that's, that's the difference between you and lots of, unfortunately, a lot of the people, is that you, you don't have that support system. Hey, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not ashamed of it all.
And you shouldn't be. You know, it's funny.
It's only by the grace of God that I'm where I am today.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Believe me.
I, I'm not an alcoholic, I'm not an addict at all, but I go to AA meetings, and those are the most courageous people that I've ever dealt with, because they actually deal with life on life terms, and they deal with it. And that's pretty amazing. Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else got any questions? Man, heart racing. Anybody? Okay. If any, could you mind if I, if, I'll tell them, if anybody's got any questions, they can ask me.
I need to get, Lily has asked to speak.
There may be more questions later.
There'll be, there'll be more too.
Well, don't mind if I do, Mayor Johnson and council members, thank you for having me. I am on Planning and Zoning, and I was making the decision last time to actually approve this specific use permit, and I turned over the rocks, and I said, hey, is this the best thing for Pearl Street? Because we see lots of faces here that came in protest against it and some for it. And I also see a lot of people that are so, that are here to actually talk about their personal experiences. It was very emotional. But my job as a commissioner is to look and see, is it there for a good reason? Is it going to improve property values? Is it going to be under the conditions that we need it to be? But also come at it from a humanitarian standpoint. In our community, we have a lot of social capital, as Kathleen likes to say, and we have a lot of people that are in support of helping one another. And when this came to our table to see as a halfway house, I thought, oh, this can't be good. You know, what's gonna actually come with it? But after hearing the things that Faye and her husband have said, and also with Judge Inselman, the conditions that were met, that we approved upon, which you cannot in the past ten years have any criminal homicides, kidnapping, unlawful restraint, smuggling offenses, and absolutely no sexual predators. Because people like Brandon, who live in that area, were concerned about what would happen if they would have any type of criminal threat around them. But I asked for police reports in Lufkin to see what that would look like, and if there were actually disturbances around that house, and there was only two called in the past two years, and they were, they're, they were not big ordeals at all. I also looked at the property value around them, and of course, the Temple Foundation bought that block, but I will tell you that those are the only two homes that I saw within that little block that was really fixed up and looked really nice. And so, I come to you and say that the people that are going to these homes need support. If they get thrown back into a situation to where they are not able to actually have the support that they need, that's restricted, that's controlled, that have boundaries, and that have rules, they are out on your streets as non-productive members of society, and you want productive members of society. And so that's why I, I voted in favor of this specific use permit. Now, there are two people that couldn't be here today that asked me to speak on behalf of them. Says, dear city council members, I would like to let you know that I fully support the New Hope Communities organization. I feel like these women deserve a second chance and the ability to return to society as a contributor to this community. I believe the location on Pearl Street is a very adequate location for this endeavor. I sincerely hope you will consider approving the specific use permit for the betterment of our community. Your friend, John C. Mast. The other one is from John Anderson. Two council members, City of Nacogdoches, when asked to provide an opinion on the desirability of approval of a specific use permit by our council for 2019 Pearl Street, I went to the site to assess its position in the neighborhood. Additionally, I determined the pattern of usage and controls intended for the described use. Such a facility is sorely needed in our community. That property was purpose-built by the Burke Center as a supportive residence for those with developmental disabilities, and is an ideal configuration for this intended use. The cost of modification for general dwelling use would exceed its potential market value. Its intended use fits its current zoning status. The described strict controls placed on approved tenants monitored twenty-four-seven would place it above the unregulated neighboring, neighboring properties and desirability for residential environment. The positive side of what facility would provide for our town would be stronger in the balance than any perceived negative aspects. Please consider granting this requested specific use permit with whatever reasonable performance requirements you wish to place to ensure its success. Thank you for your service, John F. Anderson. And so, I thank them for submitting that so that they can speak their minds to you guys. And I would also like to say, just in general, you know, I appreciate Judge Inselman coming so often. He missed drug court to go to a Planning and Zoning meeting, and he's here again, and he's answering questions, and he did a KTR, KTRE interview on behalf of this, because he's so passionate about it. And it's really hard to deny anything when somebody sees success as a district judge and also has that passion and conviction to see this through. So with support like that, it's hard to say no. Thank you.
I just have one little quick thing, because it's a little misleading, because if I was sitting in an audience, I'd go, well, you're, okay, say someone was, killed, killed somebody eleven years ago, you'd be eligible. The reason it's Chapter nineteen is, is Chapter nineteen, Criminal Homicide, covers everything from what you think of as murder, all the way to criminal negligent homicide, which could involve a car incident. Chapter twenty is, it's, it's, it's not, it does include kidnapping, but it might also include something like literally somebody getting into a, 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 could be a class, could be a stage jail felony, where they're holding somebody against their, their will. So that's, that's a little misleading. We're not gonna, when I have murders. Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Come on up, Dennis.
My name's Dennis White. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I, I have some questions and concerns. First, let me say I applaud the efforts of this organization and what they're doing. I do have some questions about prior experience, pre-qualifying. And I know Judge Inselman is, is the spokesperson, but I'm not sure he's the one that's gonna be running the facility. I think most of the questions should be directed to the person that's running the facility. Prior experience, and, and I own fourteen properties within rock-throwing distance of this, and so obviously, I have my concerns. And, and I believe I have in place a very effective vetting process. When we take applicants for, for tenants, that we do background checks, and we do in-depth background checks, so that I don't put someone next to you that, that has a criminal background. And so the, the vetting process, and I know we've heard about it, but we haven't yet established who is that, who does that vetting process, and, and who? established who is that, who does that vetting process and, and who, who will continue to monitor the, the applicants. So those are my concerns and, and I still want to know why the Burke Center closed. It was, it was built for, I think, mental health rehabilitation. I'm, I'm curious why it closed. That, that facility was in place for that. And, and I understand that the, the SUP follows the property. I'm not sure I agree with that. So if, if this entity decides to move out and, and the, will that SUP expire? And then will the next person have to reapply? Those are some questions that, that I have. And ones I've already been asking, it's five oh one three, so it is nonprofit, but how's it funded? How, how is this facility funded? Who funds it? Where do the funds come from? Donations, fundraisers, or, or is it funded by Temple Foundation or, or MHMR? So those are questions that I, that I have. And, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm for helping people. I think I've made that clear over the past forty years in this community. But I also have questions and concerns about the level of investment that I have that's, that's within walking distance of these properties. So those are my questions.
I think Dennis, the only person that's going to be able to answer that is going to be the judge or.
Well, I believe you're the one running it, right?
I am.
Yeah.
So I, I'd like to direct the questions to you. And I appreciate Judge Inselman's support. You need his support, but, but.
You can come up here, ma'am.
And, and my.
Are both of you?
I mean, I, I don't know if she knows. I tell you, what, what, what happens is there's an application process and, and I don't have an application on me, but there's an application process and we go through all of it, including criminal history, we go through your medications that you're on, your, you know, where you've lived in the past, we go probably as detailed as your application is. Plus, what I, what I do, what we do is I look at it, I have a probation officer in Angelina County look at it and a board member look at it and our house manager looks at it. So between us, we make a decision on whether that person should, should stay or go. So that's, that's, that's the application process. Okay, and then in terms of funding, I got funding from the T L L Temple Foundation, the Kirk Foundation, the Grun Foundation. Individuals gave me money and so we have no debt. It's my intention to do the same thing here is y'all aren't, y'all aren't exactly always poor, y'all aren't poor cousins, y'all got money up here. And you can tell, I mean, I went to see Mr. Mast and I'm pretty sure we can get the money from somebody. I don't know who it is, but I, I walk in faith and I'm certain Nacogdoches County can, can raise the money to fund it. And then, that's, that's the own it. And then secondly, we don't run a debt. We, at four hundred dollars a month, we, that per person, that covers the, the utilities, insurance and the, the five hundred dollar stipend. Yeah, and maintenance.
Was this the only property that was considered for this facility?
Yes, this property just.
Mister Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I think the proper procedure would be for council to ask these questions. I mean, they can ask it of the applicant or Mr. White, but it's not technically proper for Mr. White to be asking these questions here.
Okay, since it's a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, sorry. Does everybody remember Dennis's questions?
I do.
Okay, good, okay. All right, okay. Would you, would you?
Sure, I'd, I'd like to ask Judge Inselman, I think the world of you, but I think I'd like to direct the questions to you. And you didn't state your name, I think, for the.
I apologize. Fay Rhodes, County Road, eight thirty-five, nine eighteen County Road, eight thirty-five.
Okay, so I think Mr. White's question is what kind of experience have you had in this? And your five oh one C three is very recent December, I believe.
It is.
And I think those are his questions. Could you?
Experience, not a lot, Mr. White.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be just in running a sober house.
Right.
What do you bring to the table?
I, well, again, as a nurse for forty-three years, I have worked in some rehab units over the course of my time. I've been around that, the process of rehabbing, moving forward, the support that they need or the support that they don't have, one or the other. But that's, a lot of my experience has been in my nursing career.
And what is your, what brings you to this juncture in your life?
It is, it is a calling because we have seen a lot of addiction lately, personally, friends, family. And it's, and we just happened to meet Judge Inselman and have met with him numerous, numerous times to get the input and his processes. But just knowing the need is there is one of the biggest reasons that I'm here.
And will you be staffing it personally? I think that's what Mr. White was asking.
Will I be living there?
How will you get your staff or how will this happen?
This, it'll be a lot the same, like he does. There will be interviews. You know, we, we have to interview, we will plan on having a house manager, so we have to interview people. We need to make sure, and with Doctor, Judge Inselman's input, we know that we will have the right direction and the right people in the right place. We know that. I have been to his houses, I've seen his houses and I know and see how they're run. And I am amazed at how well those houses have done.
Mr. White has done a whole lot of, made a lot of contributions to this city and you might want to think about expanding your board to include people like Mr. White that might help ensure that, you know, conditions are.
Consider the expansion done.
I told, those are all my questions.
Fell into that. Congratulations.
Anything else?
You know, the thing that is, and I, I understand where you come, it was last year, some year, they gave me some award down in Lufkin. And, and as I'm sitting, it was a surprise, so I'm walking up there and, and I realize that I'm not deserving. I really am not. There's those, those, those two people who are the house manager and that's the most important person that, that's going to be hired is, is, is those house managers. And you've got to take your time and, and literally in this situation, I told you the story about the lady. It's, it's, we've got to go through a process and we will, we will find the right person. God will lead us to that right person, I promise.
Let me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, are, are y'all planning on buying the property?
My plan is to buy the property, yes.
Okay, all right, so the property is for sale.
Yes.
So you buy the property and there are restrictions on who can live there, rules to follow, guidelines to go by. If you don't buy the property, somebody could buy it tomorrow, turn it into section eight housing. And there ain't no rules. It's wide open. So something to think about.
I have a couple of questions if I can. Nine, nine bedrooms.
Can people sit down or?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to talk to you. Thank you, thank you. It has nine bedrooms, right?
Correct.
How many people are going to be living there?
There will be eight or nine.
So it's one person per bedroom?
It's one person per bedroom, that's it, yeah.
Is it, and we talked a lot about a women's house or a men's house. Is it one or the other or is it both?
No, it's not both. It will be one or the other and leaning to that, to the women.
Well, can we put that condition into it, that it's a woman's house? Because that might make people feel better. I think there's a misconception that people, everybody, every single person has a family member or themselves or someone they know that's been addicted to something. So I think it's wrong to think that there's a bunch of evil people up here asking questions.
Not at all.
I think the fear, well, I know from the people calling me and asking me about it, their fear is they're worried about, and maybe they'll speak to it, I don't know, but their fear is that there's going to be a different vibe to the neighborhood all of a sudden. I think their fear is if you pass, if this one gets in there, like you own a couple of houses or whatever, would you want to expand? Would you, if you, if this one works, would, can you put another one next door in that multifamily that's next door if it came up for sale?
Well, I could, I suppose, go through the same process that I went through for this one.
Right.
That is not my plan. But yes, if you're asking if you want to just.
Well, I think.
Put women there in, in this proposal, then yes, I'm okay with that.
So if we're changing, I don't know this rule, but if we're putting conditions on it, does that mean it needs to go back to zoning again or what do you do?
No, the, the council can add their own conditions to that.
Okay. And so there's only eight or nine people in the whole house, including the manager, right?
Including the manager.
Okay.
Correct.
Anybody have any more questions?
If nobody else is going to speak, I mean, I have some thoughts.
Ted, you have a question?
If there's anyone else to speak, I'd say we let them speak and then we have our discussion.
Anybody from the audience wants to speak? Allison, and then Brandon, you'll be next.
Gosh, I don't get nervous speaking, but I'm nervous. City Council Manager, or Mayor, thank you for allowing me to come and speak tonight. I'm Allison Hancock Nolan and I have a script because I will get off. So the first thing I want to say to each of you is thank you for serving our city. Your service is greatly appreciated. The second thing I want to say is please approve this sober house on your agenda tonight. Here is why I support it. I'm a recovering alcoholic and addict. By the grace of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, I stand before you tonight, ten years, six months and one day sober. I grew up here, I went to high school here and I graduated from SFA and my husband and I make our home here in Nacogdoches. But when I went, made my choice of sobriety, I had to go to Austin for treatment and for a sober living environment because there wasn't one here in my home for me to come back to. I'm confident if I had returned to Nacogdoches immediately and back to the lifestyle I was living, I would not be standing here sober in front of you today. If I had not been able to transition from rehab to a home, to a home without a sober living space, I would have been, it would have been very difficult for me to stay sober right out of treatment. Sobriety is not an easy road. It's not an easy road to travel and we have to give those of us who need and want the help the best chance possible. We live in a town of three thousand people, a town high with college student population, a town, and we need a sober living space to help our residents deal with their addiction. This is something much bigger than each one of us. Please act on this opportunity tonight. Thank you.
Brandon?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Brandon Raoul, the homeowner at nineteen eleven Pearl Street, which is six houses down from the proposed location of the halfway house. I'm going to approach this from a position of concern for the prospective residents of this, this house. I'm not being hyperbolic when I say that the decision to place this house or, you know, sober living halfway house in its proposed location has the potential to impact the safety, the well-being, the future of our already crime-challenged neighborhood as well as the individuals that would live in the house. Why? Well, it's no secret that Pearl Street is one of the leading contenders in Nacogdoches for the most police dispatches. I asked for a printout of all the incidents on Pearl Street from the NPD within the last year and I was sent a hundred and thirteen pages of incidents on Pearl Street alone. A large portion of the crimes involve drugs or alcohol in some form or fashion. Furthermore, the plan to establish a halfway or sober living house for individuals recovering from drug or alcohol addiction on a street such as Pearl Street, just two blocks away from SFA in a, in a location that is surrounded by three liquor stores and twenty other establishments selling alcohol within a mile radius is questionable. When I first heard what was being proposed to be placed there, I genuinely thought the person was joking. For a halfway or sober living house, for those affected by drug and alcohol addiction on Pearl Street to live, of all places, is something I would expect to see in a comedy sketch because it's outrageous, in my opinion. Out of the fourteen houses on our block, the same block where it's located, all the people I spoke with said they are against it. And some of the few that I didn't speak to, I believe, wrote letters suggesting the same. And this is on the same block that is actually going to be located. Additionally, two houses down live three women who attend SFA and they stated that they feel that they would be put in danger if the residents fail to stay sober and don't make curfew, leaving them to wander Pearl Street for the rest of the night, two houses down from them. Also, part of the consideration or part of the concern was, is it going to be men or is it going to be women in here? My wife and I, we live alone, we only have some dogs, much more concerned with men being in there for obvious reasons. To be clear, of course, I understand the importance of providing support and rehabilitation to those who have substance abuse issues as well as the facilitation of transitioning from prison, if that's where they eventually end up coming from, back into society or people who just need the help in general. My late mother went to eight different places like this, but to Noahville because they were all located on streets like Pearl Street and around familiar faces, as the, as the lady said. She was able to get out of Nacogdoches where she was able to get help because if she would have stayed in Nacogdoches, it might not have worked out the same. And I'm not saying that's the reason it wouldn't have worked out. Now, Pearl Street and, you know, all around it, I understand that it's fundamentally not wise to put an addict around their addictions. Pearl Street, as we all know, and I hate to admit it because it's my street, runs rampant with drug and, and alcohol addiction. There's all sorts of things like that going on all over Pearl Street, all hours of the day and night, unfortunately. The proposed placement of this halfway or sober living house is deeply flawed and fraught with potential negative consequences. Placing vulnerable individuals, the individuals who will be living there, in such proximity to where the availability and consumption of alcohol, drugs and even violence, if you look at the hundred and thirty-two pages of police report, are prevalent. This is a recipe for disaster, in my opinion. By situating a halfway or sober living house in such a location, we are essentially creating a breeding ground for relapse and potential conflict. The temptation and accessibility of alcohol and drugs will only serve to exacerbate the struggles of those in recovery, increasing the likelihood of substance abuse relapses. I absolutely want to see these individuals overcome their addictions and live long, healthy lives, undoubtedly. And that is exactly why I think this particular proposed location is a bad idea. Lastly, I noticed that none of the restricted crimes that would bar admission to this place were aggravated assault, robbery or burglary, unless I'm wrong. So that's a concern again for me. And if it is men, I mean, that's, there is a difference, you know? And people that I talked to on that block overwhelmingly said absolutely not if it's men. They said if it's women, maybe. And that's on the block that it's on. So whenever we heard earlier that the written responses, one of them was for, those are the people that just wrote in. I talked to them face to face and that's what I got. Thank y'all very much.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll open it up for council discussion now.
Do you close the public hearing?
Okay, all right. And no, no other comment, then the, uh, uh, public hearing is closed. Come, come on, Brittany.
It's not closing.
Brandy.
Brandy, yeah. I said Brandy.
Um, does the, um, sorry, Brandy Cartwright, twenty-eight oh six North Pecan Street. It says that the SUP follows the property, but do the conditions also follow the property that you put on the SUP? So that's my question.
So the conditions do follow the property? So if anyone was to take over this business? So the conditions do follow the property, uh, so if anyone was to take over this business, they would have to follow the same exact conditions. There are some exceptions. Uh, if the property becomes vacant, or they stop the use, and within si- uh, after six months, the, uh, SUP becomes null and void. There is other, uh, exception. If they, if the conditions aren't being met, city council can revoke it as long as, uh, they provide notice to the owner and, uh, another public hearing is, is conducted.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Now we'll close the, uh, public hearing with no further comment, and we'll open it up for council discussion.
I have a question for you, uh, Mr. Attorney. Is it my understanding that this is a Title IX situation, or ADA situation, that you can't honestly dis- deny this because it's the law?
No, well, well, what I say is, the residents of this facility are a protected class under the Fair Housing Act and, and ADA. Um, so there is a, what I would say, a heightened standard for a protected class, as it would be for any other protected class. Um, and so that the, to the, basically, you would have to show, under the, both acts, that you reasonably accommodated the disability. And so, um, if you're, uh, I, I would say that necessarily precludes you from rejecting the application, but it would be a more difficult standard than a, another type of application, whereas that applicant wasn't a protected class. Does that answer your question?
So, you're open, you open yourself up to being, the city opens itself up to being sued if it denies it. Is that correct?
It's potential. It's potential. That, I mean, of course, anyone can file a lawsuit, so even if they're not a protected class, someone can file a lawsuit. They take, pay the fee and go, go file their lawsuit. But, so, I don't want to say just because they're not a protected class in the future, and you deny an application, that you won't get sued on some basis, but, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I have some thoughts. Um, I also did some research to, I'm sure no one is surprised with that. And there are three variables that relate to, um, the success and safety. And the first one, you addressed, who will be the residents? And I think it's a very wise, um, choice to say both things, that they are women and that they have had to complete the thirty-day, uh, residential rehabilitation. And I would, um, like to see those included in this, um, um, in this application, or in this, uh, permit, this specific use permit, um, as conditions. Uh, the second thing is, the second variable was, are there strict, um, very specific rules that will be followed? And I understand there are, and, um, zero tolerance is a huge part of that. Those houses that did not follow zero tolerance policies really had difficulty. And the third variable was exactly what you asked, um, Dennis, about who staffs and administers it. And, um, um, I, I, I know you're, you've only been a nonprofit for just a few months, and I know you're getting a lot of assistance, so I believe that if, I, I will feel better if you do expand your board. I can think of, and I've, I'm so sorry, I don't mean to throw you under the bus, Dennis, but you would be just such a wonderful board member for them. But if you would reach out to find other people who would be, make sure that the, that, that, uh, all these things that you're talking about are followed, I would feel very comfortable. I know we do need a facility like this. I, I do believe it will be very safe, and, um, we might, the other thing I was going to suggest is we might add aggravated assault as, I don't know what I'm getting into. If we add that as a problem, uh, is something we don't want to look at, um, since Mr. Ral brought that up. Is that a, is that a, do you see that as a problem, if we add that as a? I don't even know what code it is. I, I will ask your opinion here, Judge.
I mean, I would say that aggravated assault should prohibit you.
Okay.
You know, aggravated assault can be one of those things that,
Right.
It's, it's sort of vague. Uh, I had a lady, no, Judge. You asked me a question.
I'll, I'll tell you what.
I may be out of order.
Well, I'll tell you what, it, it's okay. We, we could just say that that's considered, because I understand what you're saying. I had a student who had a baseball bat and tried to protect herself, and then she was, that was aggravated assault. Right, with a deadly weapon, and she was just trying to protect herself from a, a boyfriend, so. Um, um, how about, uh, let's just leave that, that off, but, uh, but if we do see situations, you know, they can be brought before the council and we can think about it, so. So, alright, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting we have those two conditions, the thirty-day residential rehabilitation, and that it's women's, a women's sober house.
I've just had an issue with terminology, I guess, between the halfway house and sober house. And I'm more in favor with it, what it really is, if it's really a sober house, and with, uh, uh, women, female ladies. Uh, one of the things is, and you mentioned about the staff. Now, this is supposed to be a location for physical and psychological healing. Do you have counseling available to those? Group, uh, maybe individual?
So what hap- what happens is, that part of that is,
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Part of that is, that's, the drug and alcohol counseling is, ADAC is here. In fact, I talked to them because I wanted to know, they have a larger facility down i- in Lufkin, but they have a facility here, but it needs to expand because y'all have a drug problem. Um, so that's, that's part of it is, is that, i- if you're, if you're on probation, so you got that probation element, and you got the people who went to that private pay people. Uh, if you're on probation, they'll meet with their probation officer, they'll do, uh, they'll have, they'll have counseling, drug and alcohol counseling, and so then you will have, but we won't actually, all we're gonna do is require you to follow your probation, if you're on probation, and attend at least two AA, NA, most excellent way, or celebrate recovery. So, that's, that's the bare minimum.
Okay.
But it's, it's right, it should be a sober house, because that's what, what, what we're here for.
I mean, is that designated AA and NA, that's alcohol and narcotics?
Yes, sir. Yeah, AA is alcohol, NA is narcotics anonymous, most excellent way, and celebrate recovery are faith-based, uh, one is a twelve-step process.
And who ensure that they attend these classes?
Okay, so when you go to class, what the, how, how, house manager does, um, you get a little sign-in sheet, and you have it signed. And then, oh, every once in a while, you go by and you say, hey, is that your signature? Because you have to have it signed by the person who, who chairs the meeting. And pretty soon, you start to recognize their signature, and then somebody, I mean, there's been forgeries, but it's usually they, usually the ladies go together to the, to the meetings.
Thank you. Judge, I'm gonna ask you one, okay, uh, Brandon was up here, and I can't argue with his statistics. Are you okay with that?
With, with statistics in particular?
As far as where the neighborhood is.
Yeah, right, as, as, I was gonna say something, but I thought, uh, ADAC, which is on the corner of Frank and Regay in Lufkin, literally you walk out the door, the front door, and you could walk across the street, and it's a convenience store, and then what's it, every convenience store now in Nacogdoches and Angelina County? Beer. I mean, it's, it's everywhere. It, and, and then the neighborhood in which we're located, it's, uh, it's probably within four blocks to the north, maybe five, but I think it's four. I, 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 you can buy meth. You can buy it, uh, easily. I mean, it's, we get the same problems y'all do. So, you know, yeah, uh, is there a better neighborhood? Yeah, as soon as I say, hey, yeah, I, I think there's, uh, what is it, Appleby, what is it?
Appleby Sand Road.
Yeah, can, yo, yo, isn't that a nice section of town? Y'all, I mean, it, it's not gonna be, I can't, it's, it's, it's gonna, this is the perfect location in terms of, of the structure. Is there a perfect location? I don't think so, because you can't find one that's perfect, because it's, the alcohol is everywhere, so is drugs.
I just wanted to make sure that I, I can't argue with his statistics as far as, that is a very, very high crime area.
Yes.
I'd like to ask Chief Williams to come up.
Okay, we can.
Yeah.
Unless if anybody else has got any questions on the council.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm fine with hearing from Chief.
Okay. Um, Chief Williams, so I know you're familiar with our entire city, including Pearl Street.
I am.
Um, the, the consideration of, um, some kind of violence, is there something you might suggest we think about, um, including to, to, um, say we, we don't want people with this kind of conviction, or you have?
Well, I know they have, uh, I think I know what you're asking. I know they've narrowed it down to a few chapters. But I think we can cover it with a violent felony, because that covers all of it. And that covers the aggravated robbery, the aggravated assault, things like that, which is not included. So, uh, that might be a, one of my suggestions, is a violent felony. I've also been looking at that conviction in the past ten years. So, criminal homicide, if you're convicted, say in nineteen eighty, and you do forty years, or your conviction's forty years old, but your final adjudication might need to be, that, that might be a better wording. Now, that, I don't know if it goes with the premise that they're doing, that they're operating under, but most people that get convicted for homicide get more than ten years, so you're looking at ten years down the road. That doesn't apply anymore, if they're going by the actual wording. Does that make sense? So they do their time for twenty years, the conviction was ten years, or, or twenty years ago, but they're only good for ten years.
Right.
That's just something I've been reading over and over, and that's a loophole, basically. Violent felony, move it to final adjudication. That may clear some of that up. And as far as Pearl Street, Mr. Ral was right, there is a lot of activity, there's a lot of, the lady earlier pointed out a lot of pedestrian traffic, so things we have to consider. Anything else?
Mr. Beverly, it has a.
Not to throw another thought into it, but if it's all women, is there any concern, I don't know, about monitoring on y'all's side on them actually being potential victims? If that's known, that there's a cluster, knowing that that's not our, necessarily, I get the, I get the reports every night as well, so. Making sure that they've got enough safeguard on their end too, housed there, given the fact that they're not in the best neighborhood. And I don't know if you've got any thought on that, because I think it's been looked at, sounds like it's been looked at from the other perspective. But, you know, you, you've got some folks that are vulnerable at that time, not necessarily in the best place. So that's, that's another.
Which would be, which would fall under an internal, uh, some of their internal policies, basically.
You're looking, you're looking, you're looking at a curfew, you're looking at a well-lit, uh, place, but, yeah, I mean, is it, is it a possibility? Yeah, it's a possibility that, you know, crime happens everywhere. But, uh, yeah, your concern about the women, and I, I understand it, is that's why we.
My, my, my concern would be that, just that they don't get targeted, if it's known in the neighborhood that, that's, whose house there? And the circumstances.
Yeah, we, I mean, I'm not saying that it hadn't happened yet in, in Lufkin, but, uh, you know, those, those are vulnerable people. And, and, you know, our safeguards are, we, we monitor them.
It, it must be that Southwest Houston and me is showing. So, that's, that's where I grew up, so.
So, yeah, okay, here's, here's the problem, is that aggravated assault with a deadly weapon could be the baseball bat, it could be the car. I mean, here's where, what I will look at, and what I would suggest that we continue to look at here in Nacogdoches is, we don't want somebody who's got a violent history. The last thing you want is somebody up there who's, who's, is gonna cause trouble. You, you, you can move on. It's better to have four women who are living a life of recovery together than to have five with one of them who has a bad history. I mean, we don't have any of this in Lufkin, but we have, I've never had anybody, honestly, uh, there might be somebody with some type of assault, and that's the deal, is I don't know how far down it is on assault, but I don't, I don't want a kidnapper, I don't want, you know, somebody, we're gonna have to make good choices, I mean, that's, I mean, but you don't, you don't want bad people. You want, you know, honestly, you don't want anybody with, with serious criminal history, and you, and, and right now, and, and it's real, real important, the right house manager, and making those right decisions on those first few ladies in particular, because you want it to be successful. And it breeds success when you have people who are successful. That girl right there, that one right there, could stand up and tell you about her experiences at Mantoo. Were you the first one?
I was the first one in my bed.
And she's, she is a counselor at ADAC. In fact, one of the counties in which she co- covers, I just saw you walking, and when I was walking back, is, is Nacogdoches County. So, she's gone from addict to, to counselor.
Is it staff twenty-four hours a day?
No, sir. It's, uh, both the managers, like, one manager works at ADAC, he's, he's, uh, is a, uh, drug and alcohol counselor, and the other one works at the Family Crisis Center in Lufkin, so, uh, they work eight to five or day jobs, and then they come at home, both of them come home at lunchtime. But, but what also happens is, these, these houses are pretty vacant during the day, uh, some of them, because they go to work. Some of them have night shift jobs, and a lot of, I think, three of them work at Pilgrim's Pride.
Are you talking about this house that they're doing right now?
No, 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 I'm talking about Lufkin. No, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. No, I'm just talking about, based upon our experience, you're not gonna have somebody there twenty-four seven, your house manager's gonna go to work. You get five hundred dollars a month, you can't live off of that.
Okay, I just was.
No, but, 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 yes, sometimes they're completely vacant, sometimes there's one or two people there, cameras in both the houses.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have.
I had something.
Sure.
I'm not against rehabilitation in an alternate form, such as not the penitentiary. But I want to make sure that we do everything that we're supposed to be doing ahead of time to allow the people that actually want it to be able to get it. Not the people that are violent, that are in there for alter, for some kind of alternate reason. So, I'm for it, don't get me wrong, but let's do it right. Get it right the first time, you don't have to go back.
Thank you.
So I'm still confused about the wording, and I don't know if, Jerry, if you're listening, because it's a legal, I'm in a legal, you know, I'm not a lawyer.
What wording is to?
Uh, how to assure that, you know, that there is not a violent, or, or maybe if this is something that we just have to observe over time, or, uh, you know, we want to be able to have, have the people here who can use the rehabilitation, and, but we want to get it right the first time, Chief, so I'm not, I don't, I don't know.
Well, don't, don't forget, one of your requirements are the report of the criminal history and current pending criminal legal matters reported to the city. So you're gonna be monitoring that, or at least it's gonna be reported to the city. So if someone were to move in, um, that the city had some problems with, then that could be addressed at that point, but.
What are the penalties for the zero tolerance? That's my question.
They're gone. They're gone, immediately.
Back on probation, back in jail.
Not, not in the house.
If they, they, if they violate probation, if they violate the rules of this, of the house, they're gone. Now, it's up to that probation officer to then proceed. If you're on probation and you get kicked out of the house because you were using, your probation officer should drug test that person, because our drug test is not gonna stand up in court, the ours being the one at the house. But your probation officer would, would, would drug test you, and I would assume that one of your two judges here would revoke him and send him to an alternative place, but, yeah. I mean, here's, here's the deal, I mean, I, I talked to Fay, who's mumbling to her, is that, I'm not willing to. I mean, here's, here's the deal, I mean, I, I talked to Fay, who's mumbling to her, is that I'm not willing to die on the hill of aggravated assault. If aggravated assault is, is a concern, we, we won't take anybody with aggravated assault, aggravated kidnapping.
Well, we can go down the penal code, is what I'm saying. That only touches a few of them, we got aggravated assault, aggravated robbery, uh, what have you, that's, you're just touching a couple here. And what I wanna make sure, or make sure the council makes sure, is there are other violent crimes that we need to address. And I think it just needs to be summed up as a, a violent felony. Which is, includes all of your, includes these, includes the aggravated assault, the aggravated robbery, uh...
That's fine, as long as, I mean, I think you're good.
If we're making stipulations.
Those with a violent felony.
Let's do it right, right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, is that fair?
Violent crime, yeah, oh, yeah. I don't want, honestly, I don't want anybody with violent crime, that, that's what I'm getting at, is like, criminal negligent homicide is some... Girl goes out and she drinks too much, and she gets in a wreck, and, uh, then she, uh, judge puts her on... I mean, I don't know what your judge is gonna do, I don't know what I would do, you know, but, you know, you put her on, put her on probation, she goes to rehab. Under chapter nineteen, she's precluded from going into that house.
Correct.
But is, that's the kind of person you might wanna consider being in there. But is that a violent crime?
On the chapter nineteen, it's considered.
Yes, yeah.
And, and, and maybe after there's a more history and, uh, that we can, you know, open it up a little bit.
Put, put, put violent crime in there, and if, if something happens, we'll, we'll ask about it, okay? Does that seem fair to y'all? Chief, does that seem fair to you?
It's fair to me, but I'm not making the decision, so...
That's just, let's put violent, whatever you say.
Violent felonies.
Yeah, violent felony in there.
We'll cover it.
That, that was gonna be my first question for Mr. Baker. Is that a reasonable change for us to make, in your opinion? And also the, the suggestion that the chief made about changing it to, uh, from the date of conviction to final adjudication? Does that make sense from the, for the purpose of the SUP?
No, that, that, I understand what he's saying there. Um, I think, and I, I'm not sure, and I asked this question at P and Z, and I don't know if it ever got answered. But I think that the ten-year, uh, uh, language was added because under the rules of evidence, generally speaking, you can't get evidence of someone with a witness or whatever in a trial or whatever, past ten years. So you look for, you know, criminal history up to ten years. And I, I assume that's why that got thrown in there, but I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't know why the applicant asked for ten years there. Um, but, um, I don't, I don't know that it's unreasonable to ask, with, based on the point that the chief was making, when you're talking about someone, uh, particularly if it's a murder issue, and, you know, they're, they're in prison for forty years, but their conviction was forty years ago. And, and, you know, you're well past the ten-year period, so could technically someone like that be included? Technically, I guess yes, but, uh, based on what the applicant's saying, I don't, I don't know that that would be a possibility really, realistically. But technically, yes.
Let's assume for a second that we approve it with the additional conditions that we've discussed. Is there any, they could, the applicant could request a change to the SUP, right? But the city then would not have the ability to request that change, right? They would have that by right, because it had been changed as long as they followed those guidelines.
So the applicant could come back and file another application for an SUP to, or modify that SUP, yes. But they would have to go through the same process they're going through now, in order to get that approved by the city council? Is that what you're asking?
And then on the other side, we can't change it ourselves, as long as they're following those guidelines, right?
Correct, correct, correct.
And so that's, that's why I want us to be really clear that we, we get it right the first time. Because I've made this argument to my colleagues in, in previous zoning cases, particularly with SUPs. This is the chance we get to place regulations on what goes in a particular area. And this is, SUPs are some of the only times we get to make those stipulations. And so I, do we open ourselves up for additional liability and by adding specific conditions on it?
If liability as to whom, the applicant, or...
To the city, I know one of the discussions we're having is adding that condition that it's women only. Are we introducing, uh, additional liability by adding that condition?
And, and liability as to, from the applicant themselves, making that, uh, potential liability claim against the city? Or someone else?
From a future applicant, right?
From a future applicant.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I just wanted...
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't completely say that it wouldn't happen.
Completely, right.
But, you know, again, every application is gonna be different. Um, every fact scenario is gonna be a little bit different, so you're gonna assess it at that time and see if those conditions are warranted for that particular location. It may be a different location, if we have a similar kind of application before, or again in the future. That those concerns about being a women-only facility wouldn't come into effect as it does here. So I, I can't say that it won't happen, but yeah, so it's a possibility.
My last question, uh, is not really a question, but a clarification. Uh, we've had a discussion about the difference between a halfway house and a sober living facility. What does our ordinance currently say regarding SUPs? It has, it's required, but I know in the app, the specific approval that ordinance we have drafted, that is a condition that it will only be used for the purpose of alcohol and drug abuse recovery.
Correct, and that was part of the conditions that the P and Z implemented as well, or made when they, when they approved it. Um, that this would only be used as a sober house, so to speak. The, the, the length, or the terminology is based on what we have in our ordinance. We just don't have a category, so to speak, that's different from what we have now for halfway house. So that's, that's, that was the, that was the category by which the applicant could make this application for the SUP. So, uh, that's, that's what we have.
Thank you.
Can I make sure one thing? Because we're, uh, it's violent felony.
Right.
Okay, it's not, because a simple assault is...
Yes.
Right, violent felony.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the specific use permit as outlined in item seven A. With the condition stated, and the additional condition, um, in one, no individual may be allowed to resite at the property if they have ever been convicted of a violent felony in the last ten years? Is that what we're doing, the last ten years, or ever?
Just violent felony.
A violent felony, okay. And then also, I would like to add the conditions that, uh, to be admitted, um, to the, the sober house. Um, they are admitting women who have, uh, had a thirty-day residential, who have, uh, who have completed their thirty-day residential rehabilitation.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion second, call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that concludes seven A. Yes, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you very much, I love Nacogdoches, but I...
Don't blame you.
Consider approval of a construction contract between the City of Nacogdoches and Flint River Logistics in the amount of eighty-five thousand for Lake Nacogdoches West restroom rehabilitation.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Director. The item you have before you today is a construction contract with City of Nacogdoches and Flint River Logistics out of Wichita Falls for eighty-five thousand dollars for Lake Nacogdoches West restroom rehabilitation, which took me a lot of tries to say that earlier when I was practicing. So this project is simply for the rehabilitation of two existing restrooms. They are brick buildings. We call one the Upper Restroom, that's up near our playground and disc golf course, and the lower one is down near the boat launch. So this construction is not to tear down and rebuild the buildings. It's simply to put in prefab partitions, some new fixtures, do some painting, and also do a new plumbing chase, so that way we don't have to rip out the wall every time we have to replace the plumbing, which does happen. These buildings were built in the mid-1980s, and other than a little bit of regular maintenance, there's not been any rehabilitation to them since that point, and they are a little older. They have some of the porcelain fixtures, which have a lot of wear and tear, break a little faster. So we are requesting to rehabilitate those at this time. This project was bid twice. The first time, the bid opening was in July of '23, and there were zero bids. We rebid it again with a bid opening September 7th of 2023, and Flint River Logistics was the sole bidder for that eighty-five thousand dollars. This is all ARPA-funded, which was approved during our consent agenda. We had budgeted ninety thousand dollars for this project, and it came in at eighty-five. And here are two pictures of the upper restroom and the lower restroom. And again, we're not tearing these down, just rehabilitating the ones that are there. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. We don't pay them until they're finished, and we sign off on it, right?
Correct.
I'm good. Any other questions?
Will the fixtures in these be similar to the fixtures that we put in the new restrooms we've constructed over the last year?
Yes, sir. They are the stainless steel fixtures, which are easier for us to clean, and they're also much more durable.
And with the new plumbing chase, we'll be able to make those swaps a lot faster also?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Right now, if there is any plumbing issues, which the majority of the issues we've had are due to freezes, things of that nature, we have to pull out the wall to replace the plumbing, which incurs extra costs. So this will be a little bit easier, because we'll have a plumbing chase, which will have a door to it, that we can go in and make those repairs.
Are these restrooms locked when it gets fixed?
They are not. They are open to the public.
Twenty-four hours a day?
Yes, sir. Our parks close at 10:00 PM, so it's our expectation that people are not in the parks, but we do not have people go out there and lock them.
Have you had any vandalism?
Not, to my knowledge, no. Every once in a while, we have kids that carve their initials and little hearts in the side, on the brick, so we do have that. But to my knowledge, we have not had any large-scale vandalism that we've had to repair.
That is one of the discussions that the council had at some point in the last calendar year, was security at the restrooms as far as having timed locking mechanisms, cameras on the external areas, so we could track people if there was vandalism. Have we made any progress on that?
There have been some discussions with our Parks Advisory Board, and also on the staff end, we're working up a couple of cost projections on that, that will come up during our budget process, because there are some companies that do doors that automatically lock. There are different security systems, things like that. But of course, all of those would either come with a budget amendment if they were done today, excuse me, or would be part of our budget going forward with our next budget year. So we are looking at that, and we'll have a couple of different options to present during our budget process.
And just thinking along those lines, it seems like if we're going to expend even eighty-five thousand dollars to repair a restroom, having some form of security to prevent, just preventative things that we can do, it would be worth a little bit to spend on those. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve construction contract between City of Nacogdoches and Flint River Logistics in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars for Lake Nacogdoches West restroom rehabilitation.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next item, item C, consider approval and... Oh.
You had somebody sign in?
Okay. Randy?
It's okay. My questions were answered.
Okay, all right. You're welcome. I'm sorry. I wasn't ignoring you. This is new for me, too. Okay. Next item, item C, consider approval of a developer agreement buying between the City of Nacogdoches and EH Holdings LLC for the reimbursement of a gravity sanitary sewer line installation to the Nacogdoches Industrial Park West, located on Industrial Drive, FM 343, for not to exceed amount of hundred and three thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Case, please.
Mayor, City Council, Case Offerman, Director of Public Works, and City Engineer. We've got two of these developer agreements back-to-back to consider this evening, and so I just wanted to take a little bit of time just up front to kind of give an overview about what we do with these developer agreements. In a perfect scenario, the city would upfront, you know, install water and sewer facilities throughout the city to every developable lot, just so that, you know, these facilities are available when these lots are sold, and they can be built on. We don't have infinite resources, obviously, and so we do have an avenue for installing utilities where they are needed, and that's these developer agreements, which are part of the Chapter 106 Utility, Chapter 106, which is utilities in the Code of Ordinances. It has been a few years, but we have done many of these in the past. I think we've done at least six or seven of them since I've been with the city. Thank you. These are not by right. There is a budget for these developer agreements each year in the CIP, in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for some of these potential reimbursements, but it is just a request which the City Council evaluates and either approves or disapproves. And so, and it is also funded through the utility fund. So I just want to get some of that clarified up front before we start talking about these individually. EH Holdings LLC has a property on Industrial Drive that they are wanting to develop. They are a commercial development, and so they are eligible for up to five hundred feet of either water or sewer extension from a city of existing main. Sorry. Forgot I had that second slide in there. And so they are requesting reimbursement for the first five hundred feet of that sewer line. You can see that it does extend beyond that five hundred-foot mark, and that portion is going to be at the cost of the developer. The water line as well, kind of in the middle of your picture there, the blue, is also going to be at the cost of the developer. We are not going to reimburse any of that. And so the developer agreement has been drafted in general form by the city. It's the same agreement we used each time, and it's based on the different requirements of the ordinance. And the developer is requesting approval for a hundred and three thousand dollars, or a hundred, three thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents for the items which you can see in the breakdown, I think Exhibit B, or Exhibit C, I apologize, in your packet. You can see kind of the breakdown of the different estimated costs that's going to be facilitated. These are done exactly the way we would do them as a city. We get them professionally designed by an engineer. We bid them out publicly through the low bid process, through meeting all the purchasing requirements by state law, and then we will inspect the installation. We will require all proper documentation that it's been done correctly, testing for safety on water lines specifically, but there's also testing that's done on sewer manholes and things as well, just to make sure the construction's been done adequately. And so nothing is reimbursed until all of those conditions are met. And basically, we require that the developer pay all those costs upfront, and then we just reimburse them for the amount that's in the agreement, if everything goes the way it should. Mr. Herrera is here with us today. The developer on this property, he has asked for the opportunity to speak, and so I would invite him up at this time.
Yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Earl Herrera. I know some of you folks. Anyway, been in Nacogdoches my whole life. But I bought this piece of property sometime ago from Nedco, and I didn't know what Nedco did. So I started asking questions, and they said, "Well, you know, we bring businesses to Nacogdoches for jobs and income for the city." And so I said, "Well, I wanted to build a small industrial park," and I didn't know really where to start. So I started on the east side. Here's, excuse me, TexDOT is in the middle of this tract. It's about sixty acres. There's thirty-three acres on the west side, and it joins the loop. And then on the east side, I've got about thirty acres over there. Okay, so bringing you up to speed where we're at today. I put in a street, I wish I'd brought some pictures of that, on the east side over there. And I probably put in two industrial buildings. And you're talking about bringing companies to Nacogdoches. I brought in Portico out of center, and they put in a lab there, and they test those membranes in those Portico units. And then I got in Chrysler Compression Company, which they operate in the oil and gas industry for compression. I've got a third building on the ground right now. We've already got the pad built for it. We're trying to get a site plan. Michael Delaney is my civil engineer, and as soon as we get that done, we're ready to go up with the third building. Okay, now, on this side here, I'm working with a guy named Bob Purvis. I met Bob several years ago, and he owns a company called Purvis Industries. And from what I can understand about him, they're similar to Elliott Electric. They've got these industrial supplies. I understand about thirty-five of them scattered all over Texas, and his office is out of Dallas. So we've been talking back and forth. We developed a relationship, and he wanted to buy some property on the west side. So I was telling him, I said, "Well, I don't have any water or sewer there, but Michael Delaney, I think, has been working with you guys and trying to get this done." And so we had to get permission from Coca-Cola to survey that. We just secured that yesterday. So we got permission to survey, and Michael and them is going to drop the plans. Then I've got a land man. We're going back to Coca-Cola to try to buy an easement. So what's going on there? Purvis, what he's told me, he wants to put in about a fifteen thousand square foot industrial supply building right there. Just as you come inside up my new street there, that's what he wants to put in right there. He's kind of waiting on us for water and sewer. Now, what's really good, on the very north end, I just signed a letter of intent last week for a company out of Dallas, and they're looking at putting in a huge warehousing facility. It's a sixteen-acre facility. That's going to be big. And what, I'm signed a confidentiality agreement, so I can't tell you a whole lot about it, and they didn't tell me a whole lot. We're going to get into a purchase and sell agreement. But they're talking about maybe could bring as much as a hundred jobs to Nacogdoches. So that's why I need to get these sewer facilities in here. My guy with Purvis Industries, he's waiting on me, and then we're going to roll into purchase and sell agreement with the company out of Dallas. So I'm looking forward, if we can put that together. It's going to bring a lot of jobs to Nacogdoches.
Let me ask you something, Earl. Is all that in the city limits?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. If we approve this, how long would it take to get his water to that facility?
Well, it's going to be on the owner and the developer to get it put in.
Okay. How long do you think that'd take?
Well, I know Michael's already working on the design. I don't know how far along he is, but, you know, once it all gets designed and finalized, then they go out to bids, and, you know, it could take, I don't know, six months maybe to get it all in, maybe more, but...
Why would it take that long?
So he's...
And I'm trying to give you some latitude.
So if we approve this, he's going to be waiting on his engineer?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we're not going...
This comes in to basically, you know, get it in place for when it all gets done, we can reimburse it.
See, here's what, I didn't know I was going to be here today, to be honest with you. Michael called and said, "You need to go to the city council meeting to talk to these folks. I'd be happy to." So I just grabbed a few things before I left. This is a new street that I'm putting in. And the water line, what I understand, if you look at Charles' picture here in the blue, this water line will come right up down through here. The Purvis Industries is talking about building this right here. I'm trying to think of everything I need to tell you guys. I put in the first section here, and then I came back and added another hundred and ten foot to it. Okay, the company that I'm negotiating with, we've agreed already on that letter of intent. They're willing to, from where they buy their tract of land, all the way to Ernest McLean, they're going to continue this street. And so what we're going to do, we're going to dedicate this street to the City of Nacogdoches, and all the utilities, too, because we don't want to be in a street business. So the water line will come down through here, and so the little strip of land in between what I've already put in and what they're buying on the north end, I've agreed that I will commit the funds to connect that together. So in between what I'm going to do and their do, we'll have a concrete street that'll go all the way to Ernest McLean.
All right. Any other questions?
Here is just a rough drawing of the industrial boulevard here. This is my new street, and this is roughly what Mr. Purvis is looking at putting in here, right off of, TexDOT will be here, and this will be his facility right here.
Okay.
But anyway, I appreciate y'all's consideration. If we can do it, the sooner the better, because we're ready to rock and roll.
She says she didn't have anything. Okay, all right, okay. All right. Any other discussion in the council? I'll make a motion for approval as written.
On second?
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Earl, you can go to work now. Okay, next item. Item D, consider approval of a developer agreement buying between the City of Nacogdoches and Charles Poole Jr. for the reimbursement of a gravity sanitary sewer line installation on Pearl Street, not to exceed amount of sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Case.
Mayor, City Council, Case Offerman, Director of Public Works, and City Engineer. Same thing here for Charles Poole. He's wanting to extend our gravity sewer line from Lake, is that Lake Wood Street? Sorry. Eyes are getting worse. Down Pearl to the south there, alongside those three potential lots that he has that front Pearl, which do not currently have sewer service. And so there is a differentiation between commercial and residential in our ordinance. For residential, you're eligible for up to a hundred feet of a reimbursement, unless that residential development is more than two lots, two or more lots. And then it qualifies as commercial, and you qualify for the five hundred foot, just like commercial industrial development. And so he's trying to get these lots developed for some future housing, which council has, you know, stated a desire to increase in this town. And so again, design, construction, testing, all on the back of the developer until it's approved by the city, at which point in time we would reimburse. If any condition is not met, then the agreement doesn't continue forward. So unless it's remedied, obviously. And so the developer, Mr. Poole, is also here, would like to speak to it. I should say it's in the amount of sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, and there is budget available to do this. So invite Mr. Poole up if he'd like to speak.
Mayor, City Council members, I'll be brief. I'm Ed Poole. Yes, I purchased this lot several months ago and went before the zoning board of adjustments to break the large lot up into three lots, and so that was approved. A couple of days after I did that, Steve Bartlett called me and said, "We have a small problem. There's no sewer line that runs across that property." And I said, "You've got to be kidding me. There's single-family residences all around it. There's an apartment complex next door. There's no sewer line." He goes, he acted surprised, and he said, "No, there's no sewer service to that lot." And so we began investigating what to do, because it's an unbuildable lot at this point. The plan to do this, the subdivision was developed in 1963. It's been vacant since the subdivision was put in. The plan to do this is to build three single-family residences on these lots, about fifteen hundred square feet, each three-bedroom, two-bath, which will add about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxable value to the tax rolls. And so in order to make this project buildable, then we have to put in the sewer line. So that's the reason for the request.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for approval. Oh, Randy? I was checking.
I make a motion that we approve item 7D.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. We will go into executive session with the City Council to receive information and deliberate on matters specified in Chapter D of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Council may reconvene on the matter. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, deliberation regarding attorney's advice concerning pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer on or a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. The subject of the executive session item concerns legal issues related to the professional services consultant contract with DTJ Design. Okay, it is eight twelve. We're returning from executive session, and pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, no action taken. This meeting is adjourned. God bless the great city of Minneapolis, Texas.